Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Well, welcome everyone to the Bennington's Live Board meeting of Monday, January 9th, 2023. We are at the Bennington Fire Facility and I am Jamie Jenkins and I have the pleasure of chairing this board and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
Thanks for coming, I'm Gary Corey. Good evening, Tom Haley.
Good evening, Jim Carroll.
Hello everyone, Jeanne Connor.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
And hello, Bruce Lee Clark.
Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have our town manager, Stu Bird. We have Nancy Wively, who takes excellent minutes every single meeting. And we have Jim Byers on Cat TV to make sure that our viewing audience has good access to our videos. So thank you all. All right, we will start tonight as we always do. Let's begin.
My pledge of allegiance is the law of the United States of America. In due diligence, where did you stand? One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Jeanne, would you read our vision statement if that is all that we're...
Yes, I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, can I have a motion to establish consent agenda?
So move.
Uh, thank you. Any discussion on minutes of December 19th, the warrants or the liquor licenses? They were absolutely spot on, yes?
As far as I can catch anything.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right, so we're all voting. All right, great. Next up, we have, this might be record time, we have public comment. Want to remind everyone, I have a list of individuals that are interested in speaking. For a public comment, you are speaking on topics that are not on the agenda. So if it's on the agenda, please wait till that topic comes up. These are comments rather than discussion. Please try and keep your comments to three minutes or less. You need to state your real name and town of residence. And the comments that you share, please make sure they are comments or statements that are of interest to everyone. So with that, I will start with Bill Clark, speaking on downtown.
Hi, my name is Bill Clark, resident of Bennington. Just wanted to quickly update everybody, it's been a great holiday and all that. So Wednesday, unfortunately, with the assistance of Buildings and Grounds, we'll be taking the decorations down and getting ready to put banner, the fall banner, yeah, the spring banners and stuff up. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Next, oh, okay. So Will, do you want to hold? Yeah, you'll hold, okay. Asher Edelson, speaking on sidewalks.
Hello everyone, Asher Edelson, Bennington. I'm glad to be here tonight. Sorry to say that I missed the budgetary meeting from Saturday, I believe it was. It's my understanding that sidewalks were discussed. I would just like, I mean, all of you know how to get in touch with me. Please reach out if you have comments or discussion that you'd like to share regarding sidewalks, because I would like to see more of them in town. A more walkable community is a more accessible community, all that stuff. Also, I'm running for select board, so hopefully I'll get to join you all in March. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Asher. All right, and then next up, um, I think I can't, Jack Rossermanly and Leanne Donatelli.
Lorraine.
Lorraine, sorry, Lorraine, on the Community Cafe.
Yes, so I am Lorraine Donatelli, resident of Bennington and community volunteer and here to help introduce a new and exciting program. Thank you.
And I am Jack Rossermanly, also from Bennington, and I am here with the same purpose. We have both been working on organizing a program that is going to be called the Community Cafe. It's a new weekly program that is being supported by the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Bennington, the St. Peter's Episcopal Church, volunteers from St. Peter's Episcopal Church, and the Greater Bennington Community Services. The cafe is going to be open every Saturday afternoon from 1:30 to 3:00 at 121 Depot Street in front of G-Bix. And the cafe's menu will include everything from warm beverages, baked goods, and other foods, to clothing, toiletries, and other essentials. Everything on the cafe's menu will be free. If you, any donations will go straight into the cafe project and will assist in keeping it going. Everyone is welcome at the Community Cafe, even though it was a project started out of a desire to provide support for those in our community who are unhoused or experiencing housing insecurity. The Community Cafe is really for everybody. Anyone who wants a bite to eat and a warm drink is welcome to come by and is in fact encouraged to drop by. To stay up to date on what is happening with the Community Cafe, you can follow our Facebook page, facebook.com/community/BenningtonCommunityCafe. And to find out more about the cafe and to get involved, you can send an email to benningtoncommunitycafe@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
I've got a question for you, actually. So people coming for food, one to three on Saturdays, and are you looking for donations?
Donations will be accepted, yes.
And where should people drop those off?
Those can be dropped off either at the cafe itself during the time that it is open, or they could be dropped off at either UUFB, the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Bennington Meeting House, or at St. Peter's Episcopal Church.
Okay, thank you.
And also, those donations could be coordinated by emailing benningtoncommunitycafe@gmail.com and we could find other avenues to receive donations if that's more convenient for someone.
Thanks.
Lovely. All right, and then next up, Mary Ellen Munley, for Bennington Cares.
Hello, I'm Mary Ellen Munley and I live here in Bennington. And I came here last December to announce the beginning of a new group called Bennington Cares. And the forum that the select board offers through these public comments resulted in a front page story in the Bennington Banner about the formation of Bennington Cares. And thank you for that exposure. The group met for the second time yesterday afternoon and we had new people joining us because of some of the word that's getting out into the community. And it included a Ben L teacher, a parent, a former student, and a representative from the teachers' union. And the group yesterday benefited from hearing firsthand and really lived experiences of the teachers, the parents, the children, and the challenging conditions that they're living in every day. The conditions that are, as caring citizens, you know, we cannot ignore or accept. And we are willing, as citizens, to care about and what's going on and willing to play a role as citizens in learning more about the elementary schools. So for instance, some members of the group will be attending the Elementary School District Board meeting tomorrow night at 5:30. It takes place in the district's headquarters, right? It starts at 5:30. And you know, we're aware that the select board doesn't have any authority over or in relation to the schools. But there are some select board liaisons to some boards and groups in the community. And we wonder if a designated liaison to the school boards is a possibility for the select board. Now, the next meeting of the group is going to be on January the 22nd, which is a Sunday, at the UUFB Meeting House at 108 School Street. And we invite anybody to join us. And to get more information or to get involved, you can reach benningtoncares@benningtoncares@gmail.com. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, and then Kelly Carroll, Riverwalk.
Hi, Kelly Carroll from Bennington. And I just wanted to remind everyone about the monthly Riverwalks that are happening. The one this month, they're always on the third Saturday, it will be January 21st at 10:00 a.m. at People's Park, which it's hard to believe, but this is the two-year anniversary of that. And during that walk, Michael McDonough will be there to talk about some of the updates that will be happening for some of the public safety and the other improvements on the Riverwalk. So he'll be walking with us and then after that, for those of you that don't want to walk, the presentation will be followed at the VFW on North Street. And then next month, at the February Walk, we will be inviting candidates from the select board to join us, similar to what we did in November with candidates running for Bennington County positions in Montpelier. And then in March, the Bennington Library will be co-hosting the Walk and talking about Emily's Explorer Backpacks Program. So I just wanted to invite everybody, third Saturday of the month, 10:00 a.m., starts at People's Park, goes up through the Riverwalk, and then this month will end up at the VFW for a presentation, coffee, and all that stuff. So please join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was a really good set of, we learned a lot. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. That was wonderful. All right, so, next up, we are, next up is the Water System Bond Hearing, and Jason Dolmitch, looks like he is taking the lead on this.
Stu, do you want to say anything first, or do you want me to just take it away?
Well, I'd be glad to open for you, Jason. The town has been working with MSK, obviously, to bring our water system into compliance with our water system permit. Low pressures in the various parts of the system continue to be a non-compliance issue for us. And these two projects, the Gage Street Water System Upgrade and the completion of the South End Water System Upgrade, will actually, I believe, bring us into total compliance on the pressure issues of the system. And my two staff people who are here are nodding yes, so I know I'm right. Jason, take it away.
Now, excuse me for a quick question. We are compelled by the state to address this.
We have been compelled by the state. They've been, they've been working with us, I dare say, for practically the last decade as we've been moving through these projects to try to get the system into compliance. So yes, you are correct.
Great. Thank you very much. My name is Jason Dolmitch, I'm with MSK Engineers. And also here tonight, Larry Gates and RJ Jolly from DPW are also here as well. But I'll be presenting tonight to discuss the two projects that we're proposing that have received funding opportunities through the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. So tonight, our sort of just sole stated purpose here is to ask you guys to consider or to seek voter approval on a bond totaling $5.8 million for water main replacement. Now, these replacements are going to be in two separate areas. One is the completion of a continuation project for the South End upgrades, and one is a standalone project on Gage Street. Both of them are going, both of them address needed pressure issues during maximum or high-flow conditions in both of those areas. So the agenda for tonight, we'll talk briefly about the completion of the South End project, we'll introduce the Gage Street project, we'll really talk about why we're asking you to consider this as a bond as opposed to a, the continued appropriation for capital improvement funding. We'll talk about the existing, how we've been funding the existing projects and why the proposed funding is more advantageous for you. And then we'll do a brief summary and take any questions that the select board or the public have. So in short, the first project up, this is South End, we call it the South End Upgrades. This was a project that has been on the books since 2008. And it, we started construction of that project in 2015. If people have very long bond memories, they will recall that the first phase of this project was funded through a state revolving loan fund, which covered the construction of the tank and the line between the tank and the pump station on Monument Avenue Extension. That, and then we also subsequently were able to fund some additional construction along Monument Avenue. After that initial project was completed, we then took the next, I believe, another four phases of yearly construction where we allocated about $400,000 a year to construct parts and pieces of this larger project. And that included completing work down Dewey Street, Harwood Drive, Putnam Street, and Observatory. We also did some very small upgrades at the intersection of South Street and Merson Street. So our proposed work includes about 7,500 lineal feet of replacement main that's going to cover areas of Jefferson, Stonehedge, Merson, Crescent Boulevard, and Margaret Lane. And that, that project alone is, the total project cost is about $4 million. And as Stu mentioned, this is a regulatory mandate. It's been noted as a deficiency on your operating permit since 2008. And once this is complete, you will have, you will no longer have a temporary operating permit, you will have a full operating permit. One of the benefits of that is that future improvements that meet specific criteria can now be eligible for the general permit that the state has come out with. So that's just an added bonus.
Jason, I've got a quick question.
Sure.
If, let's, let's just say that if we were not to do this, would we, we as a town face fines and penalties?
Uh, there, if we, if we chose to scrap it, then yes, you would be in violation of your permit. And I cannot say how exactly the state would, would come after you. But it would not be, it would be less positive than being in compliance.
Are you moved to? What would the...
I, more than likely, if, I mean, this would assume that the select board makes a decision simply not to do the project. Not that we can't do it at this time, but we're going to try to continue to do it, but simply we're not going to do it. Then we would be in violation. I imagine there would be, we would be subject to fines and potentially a host of other mandates that would require us to spend the money anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we, for this particular project, we haven't faced that because the town's been showing a good faith effort, basically, to pick off parts and pieces of this project ever since we started it, so. The next project, this is, we're calling this the Gage Street Upgrades. It includes Gage Street between Branch Street and Main Street, and it also includes improvements on Frank Street and Cross Street. This project has been on the books or as a high priority for longer than my memory. It goes back probably close to 20 to 30 years. It's been, it's been considered, it's been a consistent problem for the town. All of these areas, we believe that the lines are so reticulated, basically, they're just filled with scale, that anytime you bring any flow into any of these areas, they just run out of pressure and water. So the goal for this is to do an, essentially, an in-kind replacement with some minor modifications, which will allow for maximum flow events as well as provide adequate fire protection in these areas. And that, I apologize, that, that project is estimated at about $1.8 million. So the question is, why now? Why not continue the way we've been continuing? And I really think it boils down to three, three pieces. The first one is, these are high priority projects, the one that we presented earlier. This is the last piece on your temporary operating permit that would get you a full, to be fully in compliant with the current sanitary survey. What, the other reason why we're encouraging you to consider this now is that what we've been seeing is that replacement projects of this scale, where we're, where we use about $400,000 a year out of the annual operating budget to complete capital improvement projects, are getting increasingly difficult. There are fewer contracting companies that want to work on projects of that size. And so it's much easier for us to start packaging larger projects over a million dollars and we get better price competition, we get more interest by, by other contractors, and we're able to find some economies of scale. Every single time we put a project out to bid, all of those costs are, cost about the same each time, regardless of the project's size. So there's some soft cost savings that come along with it. In addition to that, the, which I don't have on here, is that we have seen year-over-year inflationary increases. I did some real basic math. The 2015 project we did, we did with the exclusive of the, of the tank and the pump station, which are both big ticket, big separate fixed cost, big ticket items, we spent about $140 a lineal foot. We're, we've seen that, we've seen an increase of year-over-year somewhere between 50 to 40%. So we now are estimating somewhere around $500 a foot for these types of projects. So the scale of the projects gets smaller, they become more difficult to manage with our operating budgets. And that, lastly, we applied in February, because these were high priority projects, we applied with DPW to receive Drinking Water State Revolving Loan funding, and both of these projects had been funded. And we'll talk about the terms of those funding a little bit later, but what this is going to allow us to do is really lock these projects in at today's dollars with favorable terms. So the funding, as I mentioned, the original South End Improvement Projects, we did a big, we bid off a big chunk at the beginning with, with an SRF fund, loan fund, and then we've been funding those projects at about $400,000 a year since. We've seen our pricing get increasingly volatile. What I will say is, the COVID effect that people have experienced with, with inflation, infrastructure costs predated, the volatility and increases predated all of that by several years. So, and we really, we've seen some slowing, but it's never, it's, we don't expect it to go down anytime soon, or at all. And so what, what the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund opportunity gives us is, they've given us loan terms, or the town loan terms, at a 2%, what they call an administrative fee over a 30-year prepayment. So it amounts to about $259,000 a year for both projects. So putting it into context, if we just look at what we've been doing versus what we'll end up paying for approximately a year after project completion, you'll notice that that number is a little bit more than half of what we've already been allocating every single year for these types of improvement projects. So, so, and I think, and then, so, in summary, this, we're asking you guys to consider this opportunity because it's going to accelerate two very high priority projects for the town. It's going to correct system deficiencies that have been noted in the operating permit, and it will reduce the budgetary burden to fund the noted improvements by approximately half. I'm, I want to be clear that I'm not saying it will not cut people's water bill in half, but what I am saying is that this fits very neatly inside of the operating budget for the system. So with that, I just want to thank everybody for the consideration, and I'd be happy to take everybody, anybody's questions.
Great. You start with the board. Any questions?
Jason, is there any hazard to the houses that are on the system where we're upgrading right now?
So, yeah, in short, I always want to point out, we always have to point out that this is a drinking water project, so I have to be very careful when we talk about fire flow. But when, during maximum flow event, if there's a loss of water pressure, there are hazards associated with that from a bacteriological perspective. You can get backflow, you can be pulling water from stagnant parts of the system. So there's a, that's a health impact to having, having areas that have the potential for a drop in pressure due to a high flow event. In addition to that, all of these areas really are not being well-served by the current fire hydrants. And all of those, once we're done, will have, will be upgraded to a point where they have fire protection at the, at the current residential standard.
And is there, are there any funds from the lead, lead project that's going on that might reduce the cost of these, or?
Any, any service lines that are in these regions that are, have, that are found to be, have lead will be, that, those would be paid for through those, through that project. But the mains themselves are not eligible for that program.
Okay. Thanks.
Other question.
Gary.
Wait. Gary, are you, did you have another?
I'm all done, yeah.
Okay, Tom. Jeff.
Thank you, Jason, for this. And, you know, the most important questions were already asked and answered, my questions. And that is, we are compelled to do this, there are statutory fines that we would have to pay. So when people, and this serves the greater Bennington community. So I'm, I'm sure we'll get some pushback on this from our constituents, but this is necessary and it's got to be done. That's it.
Um, will any of the work be done by our more-than-capable staff?
These, these will be, these will be contracted projects.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the very capable staff has many things to do.
Yes, I know, but they, they always seem to be able to find the time to do more somehow.
They have, they have a lot of work to do, so these will be, these projects will be done by others, yes.
They're smiling.
Yeah.
Consider my question a compliment.
Sarah. All of the lines that are replacing, are they all residential?
Uh, the service lines, or?
Are they all servicing residential properties?
Um, those, so, the service lines themselves, these projects won't necessarily replace the service lines themselves. They'll replace out to the curb stop, but there's no need for us to go into properties unless, you know, as stated before, if there's a lead service line found, then that would be replaced wherever there's lead, lead-containing components found. But it's, it's, all of this work, all of this work for all of these projects is primarily completed inside the right-of-way and is municipally owned.
Okay. Are there commercial properties along them?
Uh, I, they...
Without looking at a map?
That's a great question.
That's, I guess that was...
I haven't memorized all the locations. I think there are a few non-residential locations, but, but there again, you, the town, own every, every part of a service line between the curb stop and the main, so you're replacing town-owned components regardless of whether it's residential or non-residential.
I guess I'm just wondering if this will help increase, help us to have more housing?
This...
Have the opportunity to have more housing?
Uh, the, this is not going to change, you are operating mainly at, like, your domestic capacity right now anyway, right? So both of these corrections are about maximum flow events and loss of pressure in those areas due to, when you have those maximum flow events. And so the, it's not necessarily going to change the zoning or necessarily change the underlying, like, capacity to serve a particular unit in that area.
Okay.
I would love to say yes, but I, I think that it's, it's, this is solving a different, very necessary problem.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Two points of just clarification.
Sure.
Maximum flow event, I'm assuming means opening a hydrant and/or does it have other meanings that I...
Yeah, it includes, it encompasses a whole bunch of things, right? A maximum... A maximum flow, a high-flow event is going to include anything like a water main break. It could include, it also includes, like, when Morgan Springs Pump Station turns on, that can, that can have an impact on the system. So, yes, and a very common one is when somebody opens a hydrant and a fire flow event happens.
Yeah.
But all of these things are, they're, that, that description encompasses a whole slew of events that occurs, that go beyond normal operating procedures.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And, want to talk, just clarification for me about possible lead service lines. The town, and you folks helped us with this, did a survey, and are you aware, right even now, of some of the folks who live either in either project area that have been already identified as having lead service lines coming into their houses, I'm assuming?
That's a great question, and I would like to not try to guess at that. And if, I'd be happy to provide you with some, some information, if, if we have known lead service lines, I can provide a follow-up to that.
I would, I would hope that we would know that. And-
What, what I can say is, all of the areas that have been identified, the Gage Street in particular, those areas, those areas absolutely are, there are parts of, I, I think all of the sections were constructed prior to our cutoff date, so they're going to be, they're at least in the survey area.
Yeah.
The question as to whether we've identified any of the 3,600 units that we've surveyed, I can't answer that tonight, but I can certainly follow up with you.
I would love, I would love that information.
Sure.
And, I think it's helpful, I would assume that when, when there's a contract that is written up, that that contract will include the requirement of whoever the contractor is to do the work, and utilize, utilizing the federal money that we have for replacement, but that would require them to do it rather than, or would it be Casella that?
We've, the, the town is the contracting agent for-
Right.
For all the work for the lead service line. So, the homeowners that have identified lead service lines do not pay anything out of pocket.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm well-aware of that. I'm just thinking of terms of coordination between whoever's doing this particular water work, piece of work, and the person, the crew that's doing the other.
Yeah. I mean, what, what I can say is, you know, we, the, the, those, those items will be appropriately separated and coordinated and paid through the right funding source. And whatever is eligible for lead service line replacement will be paid through that source.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. We, we've, if I'm not mistaken, we've done that through a couple small purchase items on County Street, we're doing the sewer replacements.
I wonder, I figured that was happening the same way, right?
Yes.
Right. If it's two different funding sources, when you go across the lead line, that's a different funding source.
Yep.
Even if it's the same contractor who's doing the work, it'll be just, and, and for the folks who, who haven't had this yet, just let me say, as someone who's already had their lead line replaced, it's perfectly painless. And, and fascinating nonetheless.
We should have you on for like, an infomercial.
It's, yeah. You, you may lose the use of your water for a part of a day, and if you're, but-
But what you gain by not being exposed to neurotoxins every day lasts a lifetime.
It's, it's, it's a wonder that I'm still, it's a wonder that I'm still able to speak, isn't it? So, thank you. No, that's, that's helpful.
And one thing to note, I think, like, if we, it's not just the hydrants up in these areas that are affected, if we open up a hydrant, if there's a fire on Oak Street, it could suck all the water away from all, all of, and here is, that was awesome.
Yeah, basically, it's because-
Yeah.
We, we have been separ, we have essentially been separating a section of town from what is, what I've always called the central zone, which goes up, basically ends at Northside, Pizza Hut in Northside Drive, and goes as far as Burgess Road, and then, and then the, essentially, right near, and at the NSK Steering System. So that's sort of like what, what we encompass as the central zone. So anytime there's a ma, a massive break or a fire in any part of that area, these two, these two areas that we've been working on feel those effects.
Yeah.
During hydroflushing, Jefferson High, sometimes they will go without water for, sometimes a day at a time.
Oh, during hydroflush, oh, sure, of course.
So this would be less painful?
Yes.
Exceeding.
Great. All right. So any other questions from the board? Any questions from community?
I would like to-
Wait, Asher, are you wanting to speak?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so please come up to the, introduce yourself, and come on up.
Please. Or sit in, uh, wall there.
We need, we need, we need chair a meeting, two meetings, teach, it becomes all a blur. Yeah, thank you. I would just like to get in touch with you about lead removal from the water pipes at some point, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. All right. Nancy, come on up.
I'm trying to figure out where we are as water and sewer users right now. Are we getting reimbursed by the state for the Benmont County Street project?
No, we're not. Except for those lead lines that have been identified, and will be replaced.
And what was the total on that project?
We had to replace a sewer main that ran from Depot Street down to Benmont Avenue, and Benmont Avenue down to a junction with the 36-inch main that runs out towards the wastewater treatment plant. It was collapsing, and it carries probably-
No, what was the, the cost?
Two-thirds of the flow of our downtown sewer system. So it had to be replaced. It was collapsing.
But what was the price tag on it?
Nine, yeah, $980,000.
And that's coming out of the sewer reserve?
It's, it's coming out of, mostly out of the fund balance of the sewer system, and we have, there is monies within the, the budget itself that we have also committed to it. So it's within the existing budget, yes.
And we're currently paying two bonds right now, at each of, another 10 years to go?
That's true.
More than 10 years? Or are they 20-year bonds?
The wastewater, the wastewater bond that was just voted some, three, four years ago, 9.85 million, that's a, that's a 20-year bond, or, yes, 20-year bond. We're still paying on the water tank, the $3 million bond. That was a 20-year bond as well. So yes, we still have bond costs that are out there.
And I'm concerned, using the list you provided early last year, we have another five projects to do, starting price tag is $21 million. Some of these projects were already failing last year, and, to me, they seem like they might be more of a priority than what we heard about tonight. The sand filters at the water treatment plant have been failing for past few years, that's $2 million. Filter upgrades have reached the end of their useful life at the filtration plant, $5 to $8 million. And you've got other projects on here. And I think if, if you have a catastrophe out there, it doesn't matter what we're doing on Gage Street or up on the south, south end. So I really think you need to get this on the agenda, and go over this with the public so we can see what we may be looking at, because we could have another situation like Benmont Avenue, we could have two more failures in six months.
That's all true. We could have.
Well, it, it's a shame, seeing as you're the ones that provided the list last January, you didn't take time over the past year to go over this, because, you know, I can't imagine the state and the feds will ever give us close to $21 million. People cannot afford to watch their water and sewer bills continue to go up like they have for the past eight years. I mean, we're paying $1,200 a year right now. Do you know where that falls with the rest of the state?
The last I looked, our, our rates were, were on par with most of other water systems in the state. For a long time, we were far below the average, but we are now up, up to par. Part of that is caused by the fact that we have been budgeting for depreciation. And that, that line item of depreciation actually goes into a reserve or into the fund balance that allows us to deal with these emergencies that may come up where our system failures. I mean, you, you understand, the water system is a 1912 system, essentially, in the downtown. It was built really well, and we find it is actually much better than much of the newer system that has been built. And the wastewater system goes back into the mid-'60s. So, yes, will we have, will we have failures from time to time? Yes. The depreciation allows us to anticipate for those, and the fact that we budget to do some work every year in identified areas gets us there. And federal funds have, through the bond bank or through the DEC, water and sewer, sewer funds, have helped us along those lines. It does require a bond vote, but generally, when you spread those costs over 20 or 30 years, you're able to do those projects within the line item that you would normally spend on projects in the system. As we've just indicated here, we're going to, we're going to be able to do these projects for just over half of what we've been budgeting on an annual basis to do a much smaller project. So there is an advantage to borrowing, and federal dollars have been there, they have been there for us since the 1983 upgrade and probably before, for the wastewater treatment plant. They will, they will be available to us.
And what about our remaining ARPA money, just under $3 million? Couldn't that go towards some of these projects?
Well, at the present time, we haven't identified those projects as being available for ARPA funding, but we, we will be able to make that determination, I think we have until 2024, to allocate, 2025, to allocate those funds. So it's, it's a consideration. If we find that things like Ben High don't come to fruition, we'll have, we'll have ARPA monies to reallocate, and we'll look at those projects because they are, they were the tier-two projects. If Ben High comes in at less than what we anticipate, then we'll reallocate funds. If our skate park, private, public project doesn't go forward, we'll be able to reallocate funds, if in fact, they are available to us. So we have some time, Nancy, in which to make those kinds of decisions.
I, I think water and sewer is a major priority for the town, much more than the Ben High or skateboard park. And, and I think you really have to start thinking about the people paying the water and sewer bills, because many people, to see what the bills have gone up over the past eight years, people understand it, but they can't afford to see them keep continuing to go up like this over the next five or six years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right. So I think I'd look for a motion.
And, and I've provided that language to you in the packet.
Yes.
The statute requires that, that this language be used in the, it's essentially a motion to adopt a resolution.
That the board should determine by resolution that the public interest or necessity demands improvements, and that the cost of the same will be too great to be paid out of ordinary annual income and revenue.
I would make that motion.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more discussions?
No.
No? All right. Then, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right. The passes. Thank you very much, Jason. All right. Next up is the Quality Control, Internal Investigations and Discipline Policy, third reading. All right. So, and we have some changes to format, and, mainly to format, yes? Is someone speaking to this?
I'll begin. Dan, Dan Monks is the author of the, the last set of changes, but basically, after the second reading, we began to talk among each, ourselves, at the staff level, both Bennington PD and administrative staff, about the fact that the original policy that was put before the public was not only a policy, but it was also procedures and processes, a very transparent approach to how we, how we deal with these things, but really, it didn't separate the policy from the procedures. And so, this, this reading, or this, this proposal attempts to pull the policy language out of the policies and procedures. We do attach the policy and procedure language, and you will note that it is repetitive when you get to the procedures, the draft procedures. There is similar statements in both, but what this does is it allows the board to adopt a policy which turns their authority for review of complaints and internal investigations and codes of conduct over to the CPARB body. That takes it out of your hands, it gives it to them, and then CPARB can sit down with BPD and go over the procedures, go over the processes, come up with language that is mutually acceptable to both parties, and it becomes then CPARB's policies and procedures. This board, the select board, does not need to get involved in the procedures of how these things happen. It's really what you need to do is adopt the policy to give CPARB that authority. And that's what we're attempting to do here.
Great. Okay. So I'm thinking, what if we look at policy and procedures that will fail in terms of our comments? Can we do that? There's some things for me that didn't carry over, but I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with this. I guess first, anyone have comments on splitting this into policy and procedure, rather than lumping it all as policy? Yes, Bruce?
Yeah, I, I actually think it's a great idea to do that. That's, that's normally the way these things get done, almost always. So legislative bodies handle the policies, but not the procedures. Procedures are done by the folks who are actually much more knowledgeable and do the work. And I think that can be done easily with, between CPARB, after, well, CPARB can give comments to the police department. And that sort of mirrors the way we did all the other-
Exactly.
-policies. So I'm, that, I'm really, I think that that was a good decision. I was trying to recall what was making me so uncomfortable about the previous draft, and that was one of the things. I would suggest, well, you just asked about that particular splitting thing.
Yeah, so, so, okay. So any other thoughts? Are we comfortable with having policy and procedure that mirrors what we've done in the past? Okay, that's good. Then, on the policy, the only thing I, we had, I think Sarah had actually recommended, and we had all felt comfortable with having a review date that was two years from adoption date. So, we probably should add that in under review date. Were there other things in the policy language that anyone had questions about?
I think all of, all the ones that we had suggested are in here.
In the policy part? Yeah, yeah. And we'll raise this, should we, do we want to do, yeah, Bruce, do we want to do policy procedures with us and then ask community, or do we want to split it?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what you mean when you say policy procedures.
There's a policy section, and there's a procedure section.
And my understanding is we're splitting that and we're not even dealing with the procedure.
Well, I think there, I, I think we probably do want to have a couple comments because we had raised it before, and it didn't get changed.
And, and, and that, you know, that would be a great suggestion to the chief or whoever, and, and Dan, who are drafting that. That makes sense to me, but, but our adoption, as I understand it, would be only of the policy.
Our adoption would be, but our comments can be-
Okay. Our comments can be, yes.
Procedure as well.
I only have comments on the policy stuff.
Okay. So what are your comments on policy?
Yeah. One is just an organizational one. I do think there's, we, I could see identify three major sections. One on complaint, complaints, one on investigations, and the third one is the last date paragraph, which I would call something like outcome analysis. And Dan, if you, I, I'm happy to share this with you, I'm just thinking in terms of making it easier to, to read it, rather than just having a whole bunch of statements that are out there. So the first section- So the first section is really the section about complaints. And I have a couple of questions that I didn't pick up the first time or the second time I read them, but I do now. My question has, one of the questions has to do with what ends up being the second full paragraph on page two, where it says, "The chief of police shall review every citizen's complaint received by the BPD and shall determine what further investigation, blah, 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 about the citizen's complaint." And, and the next paragraph also mentions citizen's complaint. My question is, wouldn't that just be any complaint? Because it wouldn't necessarily be limited to citizen's complaint because in the first paragraph we talked about, or the second paragraph, we talked about employees filing complaints. And so these would be any kind of complaint, whether citizen or by employee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and you might not be of citizen as well. The term citizen is.
Yeah, citizen complaint is, I don't, civilian complaint, I think is a better term. It, it is to say non-employee. A civilian complaint, does that make sense? Okay. My only other ones are slightly, I'm, I'm, this one I'm just curious about. Under, in the last big paragraph, and this was probably, as I recall, in the previous versions, I'm trying to recall why.
What page are you on?
I'm on page two, bottom of the, the last paragraph on page two.
Okay.
"The information provided to CPARB shall exclude," and this I get, "personnel records as protected under Vermont law." That makes absolute sense to me. "And discipli," "and the disciplinary outcome of any internal investigation." Is, does that mean that's not the disciplinary, that's not the same thing as the disciplinary outcome of the complaint? I don't know how CPARB could do a review if they don't know what the outcome of the chief's investigation is. And, and I could be just off base.
So, I think I know what you're saying, so it, you know, we did several, they could be substantiated, not substantiated.
Yes.
That's included, but not what the specific, let's say, penalty or repercussions were for the person that, that, that was, that was found to be in violation of a procedure.
So I would just love more distinct language there that tells us that. Because I, I don't want to get, you know, the chief, this chief may now know that and Kelly may know that as the chair of CPARB, but people five years from now may not know that. I, I thought that's what that was meant by. And my, and I have just one last one and it, and I think it's one of those word phrases that ticks me, I just caught my eye. And that's the very top of page three. I agree with the intent, I just wonder about the language. "These records shall be maintained separate from all other departmental records," absolutely, "and shall be strictly confidential." That's language we would use if we were just talking between the two of us. You know, we should keep that strictly confidential. But I could imagine a FOIA request that requires the, the revealing of that or the transmission of that, of some part of those records. And therefore it's not strictly confidential, it's confidential to the degree allowed by law or something of that nature. I understand the intent, I would want it to be as confidential as it can possibly be, but I don't think it's, the term strictly confidential is one of those terms that comes up in the movies but doesn't come up in real life, if you know what I mean.
Our attorney will review every board of this document.
And she's comfortable with strictly confidential?
She'll review the entire document.
I don't, I, I trust her, I, that's fine with me, but.
I'm sure that's, that's the case.
Well, yeah, it is the case, but we can, we can ask the question, Bruce. I, I understand what you're getting at there.
That's why we didn't change it.
Okay. If you get what I, otherwise, I'm not uncomfortable with this at all, but I, I want us to make sure that what we're doing it, that we're doing it right. That's, and I want them to be confidential. And I would hope that they would remain confidential to the degree that's possible under law. Those were the only questions I had.
Okay, all right, anyone else? All right. On the procedures, I just wanted to note that on page six, C, procedures, there was a conversation or discussion last time about changing IE to EG, so, which feels like we could probably bring that up again. And then on, I just want to check, on page nine, C, we had had some conversation about maybe clarifying that language a little bit, so we may want to think about, we may want to think about that again. And the same, we had the same conversation under discipline factors, it starts on page nine, but the actual, I think, second half of that first paragraph, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of wordsmithing of it, but I think in the end, we, I think that both the board and the community that weighed in on it thought there was some confusion, there was some confusion about the intent. So if, you know, if that's possible to look at again. Can you give me the language on page 10 that you were referring to? Yeah, so I think it was, it, it starts with the, "But if an officer attempts to devise an innovative, non-traditional solution for a persistent crime or service problem and unintentionally runs afoul of minor procedures, the desire to encourage creativity may carry significant weight in determining any discipline that might result." But there were, I think, there were various interpretations of what those scenarios might be and so, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's worth everybody just being aware of that. Anything else from us?
I had one, one other thing. Under policy, on the second page, sort of right dead center in the middle, it says, "Any member who interferes with, discourages, or delays the making of such complaints." Any member of what?
PD.
Of the PD.
You can't dis, call it a dis.
Right.
Show me subject to this.
Yeah, we probably should add that just as a clarifying.
Yeah, no, I understand this. It was fun to me. We don't get this.
It was fun to think about, yes. Okay.
The use of the word member is throughout and I guess in every case it, it's the, it's an officer or a member of the BPD.
Yeah, it's not always an officer.
An officer.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyone who works there.
Should that be in the definitions or is that just something that people would make the assumption?
Never had to find any other policies.
Okay.
We've never defined it, I don't think.
Okay.
Any other thoughts from us, the board?
You covered mine.
Okay, sorry.
No, fine.
Anyone in the community? Yeah, go ahead. Dan, please.
You brought up that question about the intent of the officer, et cetera. So the reason we didn't make any change to that is because we know that CPARB is going to want to engage with the PD to, to deal with that, so we didn't even attempt to change that.
Okay.
So we're not discounting in any way the comments that were raised in the procedures that still need to be addressed, but we just felt like, rather than have you guys take hours to go through that, let the CPARB and the PD sit down and really hash that out and it'll be good education, I think, for both sides to understand how that all works. So that was our thinking. It wasn't meant to discount anybody's previous comments in the procedures.
That's fine, I just didn't know if it was.
No, I just, I didn't want you to think, oh, no, we don't think you should do that. We didn't, we're agnostic about that, we're letting them.
Okay, okay, that's good. So any, any comments on policy or procedure from the community? Will, making your way over.
Will Greer, Bennington. I want to thank the Bennington Police Department for their examination of CPARB's review. In my personal opinion, most of the revised language that needed to be addressed and it was agreed upon or it was clarified why we could not move with that language or policy, which was included within the QC and IID policy. And I just want to say, I hope that the board is able to approve the third and final reading of this, even given the changes that we discussed. So thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Good evening, Robert Ebert, Bennington. I'm just curious, in, this is a scenario I hadn't ever thought about, but if CPARB is working with the police on procedure, who is the arbiter of that discussion if there are disagreements? You don't have to answer it now, I'm just wondering. What happens if we don't agree?
Well, as a board, CPARB can always come back to the select board if there's an issue.
So that would be our, our.
And so could the chief.
Okay, so we, we would bring, if we had a disagreement on procedure, we would come to you and say this is our disagreement.
Yeah, I don't anticipate that.
Yeah, no.
One of them.
Hello, Jack Rosserdunley, Bennington. Just a quick question about the large, the first full paragraph on page two of the policy section, which is about the citizen complaint form and taking down a verbal complaint.
Yep.
I believe this was revised in light of a conversation that happened at a CPARB meeting about how exactly that process works. I'm curious about the language, "If complainant elects not to document their complaint," it seems like they're electing not to fill out the form themselves, but they still wish to document their complaint in another way. So it seems like that may not be accurate as a description of what's happening.
Oh, not self-documenting.
Right, or if they are electing not to fill out the form but document their complaint through other means.
Okay, so if the, do you have suggested language?
I would, I would suggest something like, "If the complainant elects not to fill out a citizen's complaint form, the person receiving a verbal complaint shall endeavor to obtain pertinent facts," as opposed to saying that they're choosing not to document their complaint.
Yes, okay.
And then my other comment was going to be with the addition of a review date for this policy. At the CPARB meeting and then I believe at the presentation of recommendations from that board here last, at the last reading of this policy, there is a request that there be, at least for this initial period, a set of, a given timeframe for when complaints would be brought to CPARB. Right now it says on an ongoing basis and CPARB was hoping that there would be potentially monthly for expediency. I think the suggestion was that putting a time lock on that might not be great because you'd have to then revisit this policy if CPARB decided they didn't want to receive things monthly, with the understanding this will be reviewed in two years anyway. It might be nice to put in a timeframe now and CPARB can then reassess in two years once they've had some time to begin understanding what complaints they're receiving and how they feel about it.
So I would think that's a procedure that the board, CPARB and PD could work out if they don't agree that it's.
I, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think that's what we were.
I think Stu was pretty clear about.
I thought that's what we had decided was that, that, that discussion, not the, not the review of the policy, but the, the, the working out of how, when do those complaints get, go from chief to CPARB, that that's something that CPARB and the chief will work out. That's, that's what I thought our agreement was.
I, I know that's what was said last time, I guess I'm just asking that I think monthly seems reasonable, I don't see a reason it couldn't go into the policy and that's what CPARB had asked for with their recommendations last time. And the, what was said last time is that it would be potentially a reason to have to revisit this policy and so don't put a lock on it, let them figure it out themselves. I think they can figure it out themselves, but it would be nice to have it in this policy as an accountability measure. Not that the police wouldn't potentially be completely agreeable to monthly, but if that's, it's what CPARB is asking for. So if not, I understand, but that's.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Kelly.
And first, before I say anything else, I just want to mention that Channel Three this morning had something on about today being Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So I want to make sure that we thank all of our law enforcement officials, whether they're federal, local, community, regional, for their service, for everything that they do and protect and that they get recognized. And then I also wanted to just clarify what we did talk about. During the CPARB meeting, we did talk possibly about monthly, but then when I came back to the select board meeting, we had talked about getting those reports kind of as needed and not making it specific. And I think that may have been some of what led up to some of the separation between policy and, and procedure. And I think that that's a, that's a good thing. One question I just want to clarify, under draft procedures, to be revised and adopted by police chief and reviewed by CPARB. So I know before we've had questions about like some grammar, so draft procedures are to be revised and adopted by the police chief and then reviewed by CPARB, correct? That's the intent of the wording?
Well, I think that, I mean, I'm thinking the sequence is revised, reviewed by CPARB, adopted by police chief.
Okay, because it says to be, it says to be revised and adopted by police chief and reviewed, so is that kind of like after the fact or? I'm just curious.
That's not part of the policy you guys are.
We can do, perfect, that's what I needed. Oops, thank you.
Sure, I think it's always good to review before you adopt. Yeah, it helps. Okay, so, all right, so any other comments, questions on the policy, which is what's before us to, to possibly adopt tonight?
I'm not ready to adopt it tonight.
I'm sorry?
I'm not ready to adopt it tonight, yeah, I'd like to wait another meeting.
Okay.
To hear, hear from community members.
Well, does someone want to make a motion to adopt?
I want to ask a question first, if I can.
Sure.
Does this policy need to be adopted before the, the chief and the CPARB go to work on procedures?
It seems like it should.
It also, it also impacts the training agenda and, and I'm, well, I guess Sarah, can you say a little more about why you don't want to?
Yes, yeah, from what I'm hearing from people speak, I'd like to process that and hear from people that aren't able to make it tonight.
Well, this is the third, I mean, we have been reviewing this for two months.
Yes, I understand that.
And there was nothing said tonight that wasn't said the last meeting.
I have a suggestion. What I would suggest is that you make a motion to adopt tonight with the changes proposed and then sign at the next time, making sure that all the changes are included to your satisfaction and if they're not, then we could certainly amend the policy because, you know, this is a policy, you can amend it every other meeting or every meeting if you wanted to, so it would be nice to just get this underway and then we'll make the changes you guys have proposed next meeting. If they're, if you're not happy with those, you can amend it once again, but it'd be nice if we could move this process along.
I don't see anything, I don't see any changes in here that are monumental.
Enough substantive changes, but I understand there were, you know, Bruce's comments, some of the organization and that, and the review date, all of that we can include, but it's been noted in the minutes what, what you guys want and certainly we could, we could do that, make sure that you have that written document in front of you to sign next time.
That, that would make me feel more comfortable.
It would make me feel more comfortable because I do think that the, the intent is to get moving and, and until we have a policy in place, we can't work on procedures, we can't work on training, we cannot put in place the body that we want to be able to be doing these reviews. So I, it, it feels to me like, like the changes we're talking about are all things we can, that can be done without a whole lot of trouble. So I would look for a motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, any more discussion?
Yeah, I appreciate your com, I appreciate Dan's comment and with that I will second it, yeah.
Okay, and so the motion is to adopt with the understanding that we will see the final language at the next meeting? Okay, that we discussed. All right, any other discussion? No, I see. Nancy, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Super, yay, thank you.
Didn't know it was easy, that easy to get applause.
It just takes two ones. All right, so, next up, so, under implementing the town vision, the major thing we have tonight is we have a proposal for continued training into this, through the first, first year, full year of the CPARB's existence, the Community Policing Advisory Board. And this was something that this board committed to, to make sure that we not only did front-end work with, with the board in terms of training, but that there was ongoing training. And I think certainly, given the policy that we just adopted, it makes it really important. So, Brian has provided, Brian Core, we've talked with Brian Core about being the trainer. He worked with the town as part of the task force process. So, I'm interested in any comments from the board, and then we'll move to community. And I do just want to check on the time that Tom, that the CPARB meets. Is it, does it start at five?
Generally, it's six, but...
So, we should change these probably from the six to nine, or six to eight, whatever, six to nine. Unless you, unless, unless the board wants to meet early on those days. So, that's it, so that's an open question, then.
Right, and I don't know that necessarily...
Yeah, right. So, when we get to the community part, it seems like we have most of the CPARB here, so.
We have a chunk of them.
Okay, so, any, any comments on this proposal? I've seen it on, oh, okay.
I would be curious, trying to get it up again. I would be curious if the CPARB folk have seen this, whether they really need to get to know each other, and what each member brings to the table. That strikes me as, that's, that's part of retreat sessions. I don't know how, how granular you want to get. I mean, I trust Brian to be doing this and recognizing that. It just seems like the, the folks who are sitting on that board know each other now pretty well, reasonably well, I think.
I'm not sure you're on the same...
I'm on, I'm on the stuff that Brian sent us. Cambridge Consulting Group, Brian Core, drafted work.
I think, well, double-check, because there, he did send us the old version, and then he sent us the new version.
He sent us the new version.
Page two. Okay, show me, okay. Retreat session one?
Yeah. I mean, it just strikes me that that sort of generic language that was probably put in there, but I, that they don't need it.
Yeah.
He does icebreakers, maybe, that's, I think, I did not, he always does an icebreaker.
Yeah. I did two, and I know I hate him.
Well, we can certainly give Brian this feedback, if he doesn't watch the meeting himself.
No, it's okay, Brian. It's perfectly all right. He can, I trust that the CPARB crew will be able to, to communicate to Brian what they think they need, which is, I think, the better process. Okay.
Yes, I think this is to give us the law, the, the big picture.
The big picture, which I don't have a problem with.
Okay, we'll make sure he knows that the checking in part can go away from your perspective.
Yeah.
All right, and, and then, I think CPARB can, Rick can comment on, can comment on the, the timing on this.
Right.
So, the, one, one thing to note, which you probably did, is that the first, the first meeting with the CPARB would be the January meeting, the January 19th meeting. Okay, so it's coming right up. All right, so, any, any other comments, questions from, I see you Nancy, but hang on. Any more, any questions or comments from, other comments from the board? Okay. Nancy, please, come on up.
When you're talking about training, will there be any funding from the town budget?
There... Yes.
So, will this be on a ballot?
No. We currently have, in, in the current budget, the FY23 budget, slightly over $17,000 in a contingency amount in the general fund. The portions of this scope of work that fall within FY23 will come out of that contingency. And in the following year, we will use the contingency once again to complete the process. So, the money's already there.
I'm sorry, where did you say the money came from?
It's in the contingency. You have to go to the very end of the general fund. I think it's 01-8,000 dot 790, it's a contingency. And, and we generally budget $20,000 a year. That's what we will use to fund this process.
But, the question I have is, the committee that worked for four months to create the CPARB was clear, that if funding would be needed from the taxpayers, that it would be on a ballot for voter approval. And I asked you for three months last year, before it went to town meeting, was this going to cost the taxpayers? And I think it was the night before we voted, you said no. So, I think people are going to be surprised to find that we're paying for the CPARB. It's one thing if you put it on a ballot and the people say yes, but I think the voters should have that option.
Well, Nancy, it's in the budget, and we committed as a board to make sure that this, the CPARB board was well-trained. Their work is incredibly important, it's also incredibly complex, and we want this to work well. You know, I think we have, we have the funding, that was one of the first questions for Stu, where will, you know, can, where will we have training funds come from?
Of any of them?
And, and we have them. I think your original question was, you thought we were going to be paying CPARB members, which we are not. So, training for any board, if we, I mean, if we need to do training for any board or commission, including the select board, at any board or commission, we want to make sure that happens. And, so the contingency funds allow us the flexibility of things that we may not know we're going to need. We certainly, you know, once, we did not know that the review process, that the CPARB would be able to move into the review process as quickly as they are. You know, that's, that's excellent. So, you know, you're, I appreciate your point, but part of the budget is to make sure that we have enough money in there to do the things that are necessary to do.
I don't think it was clearly communicated.
All right, any other, yes, I'm sorry, oh, yes, Robert.
Good evening, Robert Ebert Bennington. I'm also on the CPARB. I want to say, I really appreciate the board's commitment to all of this, just your, your honest commitment and, and willing to spend money on, on this, because it's important. And I want to say this, because I just want to be honest with you. I don't expect you to change anything you're doing tonight. But, I, I really wish we could, at this point, be allowed to do our work, to get to work, and, and do what we're here to do. We already had a full agenda for our January meeting. We had invited someone from the community to come talk to us about police issues. That's been canceled. We had ideas for our, our February meeting, I think that's canceled now. Now, if I understand what's going on, we are working with the police to develop procedures that they'll follow. I, I haven't looked at all of this, the whole schedule of, of this training. I think Bruce brought up a good point about some of it may be less needed than, than other parts of it. If there's a way to pare it down, you, you said this is a complex task we're undertaking. I agree. There's probably some very specific training we could, we could still use to do our jobs better. But, this, this seemed like a lot. And, you know, we finally, we're on the ground, we're running, we're working, we're working with town staff on issues. This seems like, all of a sudden, it's coming to a halt. So, if, if there's a way not to provide all of this, then maybe you could look at that. Thank you.
So, Robert, to that point, you guys actually drew, so, the, the specific, the three specific pieces in here are, one, looking at the ICP report, and looking at what are the things that need to be addressed that are in the ICP report, which is, I think, a helpful thing for the CPARB.
But, I, I think we can do that.
I think the other, the other pieces are the community listening session, which absolutely will require facilitation and, and guidance.
Okay.
To make, and then, the third part of that is civilian review of complaints, which Merrill is also involved in, Merrill will also give a presentation to you, so that you know, sort of legally, what, what your guidelines are.
Right, that makes sense.
And then, followed with Brian, to sort of really understand how that means as a CPARB viewer function.
Right, right.
So, the, the trainings in here are not sort of like, you know, you know, gee whiz, what would you like to be doing?
No, I understand that.
And we understand that you guys have really been quite active in your short, in your short life.
Right.
And, and wanting to make sure that you do this as effectively and efficiently as you possibly can.
Certainly, certainly. And like I said, I just wanted to let you know what I was thinking, so I can go home.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I said, "Well, at least I let them know what I was thinking." So, okay, thank you.
And Jeannie, if I could just briefly, the, the agenda items that he referred to haven't been canceled, they've just been postponed.
Okay.
So, they, they will still happen, it's just not this week.
Okay. That's good to know. All right. Did, did any member of CPARB have a question, have a comment on the timing, on the five to eight, or six to nine? Just so we can give Brian feedback?
Could you repeat your question real quick?
Oh, the two sessions that, two Zoom sessions he was planning to do at, come to CPARB meetings, they're scheduled for five to eight, which is not your usual time?
No, we're six to 7:30, six to eight.
Okay, so we'll, we'll check. Yeah, okay, yes, yes. Okay, so we'll let him know that it's 6:00 PM, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to briefly state why I think that CPARB needs more of this training, as requested and provided in the agenda tonight. Through my capacity as vice chair, I should have pointed that out when we were doing the sixth agenda item. I believe that because of there being no precedent, like you said, there's, you know, we're in our infancy right now of regarding these review processes. I think that we do need outside help to affirm that charge, and Brian's been an excellent resource so far. But additionally, trying to find more resources like Brian, that work with small-town review boards, will serve the board well in the coming years. So, I know, at least I've personally been trying to look for consulting groups that may charge different rates, therefore saving the taxpayers money, that, that can do just as good of a job, and maybe even be more in tune with Bennington's needs. Because Brian, I know we've all, not trying to, I love Brian, but we, I know we've discussed how he use, usually tends to be working in larger cities, and those needs, and the same oversight mechanisms may not be the same as in Bennington. Of course, and this, I put this in here because I know that we are kind of in a way requesting money through this to do these trainings. I know I've at least been mindful of the taxpayers' liability, and seek to ensure that we can maximize the trainings, and the experiences we get out there, and the discussion, and all the scopes of the training that we have. So, I just hope the board will consider this proposal tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Kelly Carroll, Chair of CPARB. Our board currently meets at 6:00. Some of us still work, so I think getting here for 5:00 might be a challenge, and that would be something that if we were going to change, I would want to make sure that we checked with the other board members, so possibly, probably 6:00 PM would, would be better. And, let me just say, I appreciate all of the additional training and the commitment from the select board. We do encourage the training to be as economical as, as possible, and like Will said, checking some other alternative venues, possibly some of the free training that's available online, that may help us. But, I do think that having Brian come in and help us as we're trying to develop the listening session, and get off on the right track, because right now, it is a very complex issue. And without that guidance, I'm afraid we're just going to start going off on all of these other avenues, and maybe not accomplishing what we could. So, I thank you for that. Please remember, though, we are volunteers. We, we do, you know, want to put our time and do it, you know, with what we can help. So, I do ask Brian for these Saturday sessions, to make sure that they're, you know, if they're seven hours, that there's seven hours of quantitative, you know, good stuff that makes it.
Yeah, so I think the content, you know, the content is really for the CPARB to work with Brian on.
Yes.
So, what he has given here is, you know, is an outline of what he, from what he knows that you guys want to do, what he sees as important to work on. So...
Yes.
Yes, so we will leave that to you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No, Kelly, okay.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to explain that agendas, I'm, I apologize to the community for changes that are going to be happening on the agenda for CPARB for the next couple of months. However, when the town is making this kind of a financial investment, I really do think it's important that that meeting time be for that, and not having somebody who's, who's getting paid to do that, to sit down and listen to, to some other, other valuable training and input. But, it is something that we plan to have later on this spring in the agendas. So, thank you.
Yes, unless it should be private. Okay.
Okay, so sorry, but Kelly did bring up an important point. We are volunteers, and I kind of like it that way. I think that we can maximize our funds by doing these trainings, rather than compensating us. I mean, we're doing this for the town, not for ourselves. And then, another point that was brought up about moving things around in the agenda. I know I was going to do a presentation on all the research I've done over the past few months on the same topic, over accountability and civilian oversight, done elsewhere, and bringing that here. So, we've kind of postponed that indefinitely. And I think, you know, we're kind of all making a little sacrifices, because we realize you all are putting in the resources and time and money to let us do this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, are you looking for a motion?
I think so, yes.
I, I know I'm looking for a motion, so, I, I would move that, that we expend the funds as described in the, under the fees for services rendered section of the proposal. Or, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and seconded. Any more discussion? Yes?
Yes, I would just suggest that possibly, if possible, the time on, it's a Thursday meeting, the 19th, could be moved to 6:00 o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would assume that that would be in consultation with, with Brian Core.
Right, in consultation with Brian, as well as the March 16th meeting.
Yeah.
That's a Thursday.
The evening meeting times would be set at six.
And, and that the CPARB will let Brian know which of the retreat dates, that third retreat date that I think is on the inside Memorial Day.
What's, what's good?
Yeah, that you'll let him know about that, too. Yes, okay, yes.
Yeah, I don't like making motions about things I know nothing about.
Okay, so motion's been made, and seconded, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, all right. And so, then, next up is the town manager. And so then, next up is the town manager.
Thank you. I don't have a lot tonight, mostly follow-up. We have completed the majority of the major work at the Willow Park Playground. Unfortunately, it came so late in the year that we were not able to get through all of the punch list items that we have. So we look forward to a spring ribbon cutting and grand opening of the Willow Park Playgrounds and the brilliant colors that they are. On the Benmont Avenue and County Street, on Saturday morning, select board member, Mr. Corey, made a very telling statement asking about County Street qualifying as a gravel road.
At the moment?
It is, it is temporary. We had hoped to see this project finished before the Christmas holidays, but unfortunately, it's going to take another approximately three weeks to finish the project. Not all of the lead lines identified have been completed, I thought they had. And there is a large vault at the intersection of Depot Street and County Street that needs to be installed to bring two major sewer lines together into this one project. So I think that is the part of the project that's ongoing, because Depot Street has been closed to traffic. So we're anxious to see this completed. The one good thing is weather has been cooperating. We haven't had a lot of snow and a lot of cold, so keep your fingers crossed that we get this project done, so we can all travel County Street without having to go to the car wash instantly. And then the last thing is on the rail cars. We still have not received the way bill. We will reach out again to now Senator Welch's office to see where, where that is and how we might get ahold of that. And then once we get that, we will sit with council and determine if there are some ways that we can make a difference there. I think there was a column in the banner suggesting some, some ways such as eminent domain to proceed against the railroad, but that is extremely unlikely. The railroads are owned by the state of Vermont and leased to the railroad governed by federal rule and regulation. I don't think a town can actually proceed against the state for eminent domain. But that's just my reading of the situation.
No.
Do the rail cars...
No, no, we can't.
I don't know whether they've been moved or not. I haven't, I haven't been out onto Rice Lane, so...
They're moved.
They, they were moved the last time I went out there.
Do we know where they went?
No.
No, but they'll be back.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, that's really all I have in the management report tonight.
All right. So, upcoming agendas. I heard today that Bennington Sports Foundation would like to come and share an update at the end of year one, so that would be nice. We probably have some budget things that we have to do at the next meeting.
Yes, at the next meeting, you'll be asked to, well, assuming we complete the budget work on the 14th, you'll be asked to sign the warning, not only for the bond issue, but it will include the budget as well and the agency requests that we normally place on the ballot. So that'll be on the next meeting, and then we will be bringing back the revised policy for your signature.
All right. All right. Then, other business. Gary, do you have any other business tonight? Tom? Yeah? I do not.
I do not.
I do. Why not? A search of the Secretary of State's website today was a reminder that if you are thinking about running for the select board, you should have your petitions in and your consent of candidates signed by January 30th at 5:00. And I will not be running, so there will be a seat there, here.
All right. Thank you for that update. All right, so we have needed of an executive session for personnel. We will not be making any decisions when we come out of executive session. So we will say goodnight.
And I would move that we...
Cat TV land and in person.
I would move that we go into executive session for that, for personnel.
Someone second that?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.